You ready?
Of course.
Of course, me too. Alright, good morning everyone. This is Tuesday, August twenty... Hold on, twenty-sixth. And this is our Belfer sewer work session. This is just a work session, so there will be no public comment. Make sure everybody's phones are off. And... Let's go ahead. I'm honestly, I'm not real sure how this meeting is supposed to go. I think it's gonna be more of a discussion than anything. And so... I'm ready for somebody to start discussing. I know we, we, we need to come up with a, a path. We need to have something for staff to either work on or to forget about. And so... So let's, let's start talking about a path for it.
Go ahead.
One comment I wanna make is Pat, uh... It's, it's a good thing. So when we were in the one in Belfer, there was a question asked and it was nice that I actually heard an answer. I know nobody agreed with the answer, but it, I heard it because I was waiting when they asked you, "Why would we?" And you said, "Because we're paying 1.25 million." That's a legitimate statement. I thought to myself, "Okay." You know, so I sat there and I was thinking it out. Uh, one of the things we need to figure out still is if that is the issue, which it is an issue, does this do anything about that? Does it actually get there? We got situations here where number one, we're gonna guess on a lot of things. We don't have feasibility. We all know that. We don't have a, a true scope or, but we don't have a feasibility. And we should. We go up for a, a part, we get a full feasibility. We should have a feasibility on this one and Bremerton should pay for it if they want to be the ones to hook up to it. But absent of that feasibility, we gotta ask ourselves certain questions. If we do this, what do we actually get? One question is, uh, currently right now, there's a statement out there that it's gonna happen either way. Could be. But they're not gonna spend a hundred million dollars to hook up ten people. That's what's out there. There's not a lot out there. We would provide the ability for it to be out there if we do the sewer. So no matter what, in my opinion, it becomes our own competition unless we do certain things. One, I'm not saying I'm completely against, I don't think it's a good idea, but you asked the question, "How do we get there?" How do we get there would be certain things like them paying for their share of it. If they want a hundred and sixty thousand gallons, what is the actual value of that? Now, I wouldn't know what that is until we go through, we do a feasibility study to tell exactly what that would be and what that would look like. Because if we sign over that, we're giving that up. We don't get that back. We can't use it twice. So if we're saying that, then, so we need to figure out what that, that cost is. We need to see what the benefit would be and how much it costs. I noticed that Pat asked a question to, uh, staff about how much it would cost. Another very good question. I think that only covers a part of it though, and then it makes me also think of something else. We did this expansion over to the side over there. We have a, a lift station there that right now, from what I understand, if we get up to thirteen hundred, ERUs, we're at the point where we have to do some, some new, looking for new design and stuff like that. With that being said, that doesn't cover what we have up there, let alone anything more. But if we built that for them, then Bremerton should've paid for some of that too. No matter what, we're gonna keep being faced with that over and over again. So my question is again, what do we get? If we have to expend more money or we even get them to expend it, what will be our overall benefit? How will we get money back? Well, we have an expected build in two years because we're expected to be paid off with our major debt in two years. No, a year and a half.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. By then, what do you think we're gonna have? That's gonna bring in money. So with that, we'll be at the point where we're able to stand on our own. We've already done all the hard work to get there. So again, where is our benefit? So to me, how do I get there would look like something else Pat had said at the... I started to keep throwing you through, but your stuff rang with me in my head and I started trying to calculate things out. If we were to have, uh, a fee on them, uh, at fifty percent, then first thing we do is we need to establish what is our actual cost because we can't give them a fifty percent increase over, uh, we're already going backwards.
You know, fifty percent increase over what the Belfer sewer, our current customers are paying.
Okay, well, that might get us to where we're actually, actually not even breaking even yet at fifty percent right now, would it?
Fifty percent on their operating costs?
Yeah, for our costs right now, if we were to add fifty percent to it, what was the actual number per month that we needed to actually break even?
I think it was one seventy-nine with capital.
Do you guys wanna come up to the table? Cause we'll probably be asking you questions.
So if it's one-
And your staff.
If, if that's the real number, anything less than that, we're going backwards.
Yeah, can I?
It would be a better-
I would just like to-
The more ERUs, the more ERUs you had, it would reduce the, that breaking of rate.
Yes, but then you have to establish exactly what that looks like. And how many ERUs before we start to? We haven't done any of that work. So now, are we talking about a hundred? Are we talking about five hundred? We don't know. We're just guessing. We're picking this wagon. But either which way you look at it, if we're gonna do it, we can't expect that we're gonna charge fifty percent over our rate uh, and still not even make profit because we can't get ahead. We currently, to, to make, to break even, we need, would you say a hundred and...
For the current ERUs, I think it was a hundred and eighty.
Yeah, so-
Around a hundred.
So fifty percent would be, uh, what, uh-
Hundred and sixty, seventy, hundred and seventy.
So we're still backward?
Close.
That's not getting us to where the question was about how do we get there?
The, the point is, as you increase the number of ERUs-
It reduces the-
That one set, one eighty-
Yeah.
Continues to drop. If they're still gonna pay one seventy, we, we become, we get out in front of it. I don't think that, uh, that is the only benefit we get by charging. I mean, the fifty percent was there. That was what they said. You know, that's what they charge their out-of-area customers. So that's where I'm used, coming up with that number. I'm not making that up. That's what their suggested number was. So... When I asked Loretta what's his cost for things like, uh, the metering of, to put it bluntly, to meter the crap that's coming down this way, what is, you know, what's the quality of it? We've gotta know that. So we've gotta buy this metering system. Well, that should be something they're paying for because we don't, we don't need it for what we're doing. We need it if we're going to hook up to their stuff. So that's, that should be something that Bremerton pays for. Anything, uh, that we have to expand the system for to handle, to get to their point, that's their expense, hundred percent. They should be paying for that. So I, I agree that we shouldn't be, shouldn't be costing us. What, the way I see it is, um, I've spent a lot of time up with, uh, with the Navy, you know, the last few weeks. There is serious growth coming our way. The captain of the naval shipyard said, they're gonna be spending ten billion dollars, maybe more. Could be upwards to fourteen, fifteen billion dollars in the naval shipyard. That kind of money being brought into an area is an economic pressure that we can't even fathom. So the prices of everything will go up. The, the value of like properties is gonna skyrocket because things are, there's just so much economic pressure, things are gonna happen. Belfer is going to grow. We need to have, we're going to expand our sewer system, going to have to. Why not get Bremerton to pick up the lion's share of that growth? Why should we put that on the taxpayers of Mason County and the ratepayers when we can get somebody else who wants to use this system? Which we have plenty of capacity when we expand. Why not get them to pay for it as opposed to the Mason County taxpayers? That's the way I'm looking at it. So... You know, I, I realize that, that you've argued that, uh, you know, Home Depot or Costco or whatever are coming. We have no control over that. If it's gonna come, it's gonna come. And fifteen billion dollars or ten billion dollars worth of economic input into this area is going to cause those sorts of things to happen, whether we want it or not. Whether we hook up the sewer system there or not. Those things are gonna happen. So that growth and the jobs that are created is going to create quite a bit of housing and quite a bit of real estate sales and quite a bit of stuff like that in the Belfer UGA. So, why not get somebody else to kick in the lion's share paying for that expansion? Cause the expansion's gonna have to happen. I'd much rather see Mason County be relieved of the burden of all of that expansion.
But what does that look like? That's cause that-
We don't, we don't know, but what we're really talking about here is getting this ILA signed so that we pay for the study. Cause that's really what the, the one point four million dollars that we're talking about is paying for the design study. And that's really where all that gets paid for. So-
We're gonna have to do it one way or the other.
It's gonna have to happen. Why should we have to cover all that cost when we have somebody else who will pay?
Tell me that it didn't, sorry?
No, go ahead.
Wasn't there, didn't, wasn't there a feasibility study done by the FCS group? I think it was FCS?
Well, FCS did a financial analysis quite some time ago, which is kind of the thing that we use to pick a path where we are today. It looked at how much we were underwater, what we needed to do, what were some options to get ourselves out of that hole? And, um, in very simple terms, it was two options. Just leave things go, let, let growth happen organically. As development occurs, then we'll gradually get out of that financial hole. And the other was build some type of an extension, a trunk line somewhere that would help stimulate or spur some growth along. And, um, and that was the, the course of action that was taken. So we, we moved ahead with that, that plan.
Okay, and in that plan, that was, you said it was a financial-
Yes.
Feasibility?
Yeah.
Plan. So we have, we already have some, some portion of a feasibility study done. It may have been done years ago, but it's still there and that's what we've been moving forward with, right?
We, it, it was an analysis for that time period, absolutely, that said, "Given these sets of conditions, here are some options that you have." And it's a matter of, the, the frameworks there. So commissioners could either dust that off, say, "Here's the current situation," which frankly Stephanie has done. If you want to do something outside and look at having just somebody independent is another option. Um, that's certainly something that probably Bremerton would want to participate in as well. But that would be clearly defining what the scope is. Like, what's the objective that you want to have? What is the expected outcome? So that it's very, very clear what that work looks like. And either way, I have full confidence that between Jim, staff, you know, our finance team here, that, um, that could be done. But sometimes it's nice to have outside set of eyes as well. So just something for commissioners to consider.
So this is the largest thing that we've done since I've been here and the largest risk. We do have a feasibility study to find out if we're gonna buy a park. We should be doing, it's negligent for us to do it half-ass on something this important. You mentioned about control. We, uh, we can't control what's gonna happen, but we do have control. If we build nothing there, then, then Belfer gets the benefit of it because we're the ones they're gonna go to. We can guess that they're gonna build a hundred million dollar system. According to their numbers, which were eight years old, seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-seven million, eight years old. There's only a dozen hookups or less up there. They're not gonna spend that up there. If they do, then it'd be a whole different animal, okay? But right now, that's not even a realistic thing. We'd only be benefiting them. But we do have control because if we decide to do this, that's part of the, part of how do you get there? How do you get there is you ask for money for a system that our people paid for. You ask for some of the money back. Not only do they have the ability to, to spend for their own infrastructure, but if they're gonna hook onto our system that our people paid for, then we should get a benefit from that. Not in twenty, thirty years. We should get it in the beginning because they're asking to hold that money. The problem that I have with the whole ILA, and that's why it sets a timeframe, they want us to, to provide on that ILA and promise it now. Not that we might, not that we can't. The ILA is the agreement. That's where the problem that's come up with this from the beginning. I would like, if we do send something forward, we need to make sure there is a clause to get us out of it if it doesn't work. But we also need to charge. We're gonna ask for a hundred and sixty thousand gallons. What is the value of that? Now, even if you choose not to use it, you're, you're committing us forever to that amount or twenty years or thirty years. There's a value to that. We don't know what that is unless we do the work to do it. But it should be done professionally. We should have a scope of work of exactly what we're doing because that's what we do. We're a hundred and eighty million dollar company. We need to do, do it right and not just do it quick. We need to make sure that our people are protected. We get some of the value back that our people invested, not just to hook up to them, but have them pay. And they need to pay extra in order to benefit us in the end. So I see it as a fifty percent above actual cost. I see it as maybe-
So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with the word you used, "do it quick." This has been going on for several years and it's not going anywhere. The ILA is an agreement that we intend to give them, "give" is the wrong term, to let them, provide them with up to a hundred and sixty thousand gallons. Yeah, a hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day over the next twenty years. But... If they say, "Well, we're not gonna pay more than ten dollars a, uh, ERU. We're not gonna do that." We're not bound to this. We don't have to, to, uh, provide them service if we can't. That's part of the negotiation. This ILA gets us to the point where we actually get to do the negotiations of what are they willing to put into this that benefits Mason County? But if they can, if they can be the major funding source for the, the expansion, which we're going to need to do, I'm all for having somebody else pay for that than us. You know, you talk about this as a, as a, a huge amount of, uh, dollars going out. Well, yeah, let's have them pay for most of that huge amount of dollars. So, it's gonna happen. The, the, the growth is gonna be there. And there's nothing we're going to do to stop it. Cause that, this, this, you know... You know, this thing, nine point one billion dollars economic impact from Pacific, or from, uh, naval shipyard, naval base kits app. The Bremerton Shipyard.
Well, I'm not trying to stop it. I'm trying to make sure that we wrangle it, we, we get covered for ourselves. Uh, what I mean by-
I have no, I have no argument about making sure we're covered. I want us more than covered.
So, and, and with the thing is, when it comes to them, uh, the ILA, that's been the, the problem though. They want, in their stuff, they want the agreement upfront. That's where the danger has been. If, when we read all their stuff, I, they didn't wanna have a protection where we could stop if this didn't happen. Cause we did. We sent that back, remember? We sent that with the idea of, if this doesn't happen and this doesn't happen, maybe we can't do this. So whatever we put together, I think it should still include that. Because that is how we protect ourselves. But I do wanna say is, the people here have value on what they've already paid in. If anybody wants to get in, that's fine, but they need to pay. And we'll tell the public right now that they don't have to pay like we did. We'll just take them on as a customer without it. I don't wanna say that to these people because they gave up a lot. But it'll be after-
I don't believe we're saying that.
I don't even mind saying that.
Well, and that's why, that's, no, that's why I'm asking you.
But the message that you're saying, you're putting that message out right there. That we're just gonna give this away. We're not. None of us wanna do that. We've never, since all my years on this commission, I have never wanted to give anything away. And I'm tired of that message getting put out there. So, from now on, just don't say that.
No.
Because that's not, that's not what we're doing and never would we want to do that. The ILA that we had before, when did that expire?
The end of last year.
Okay.
Yep, we brought it forward.
And did that harm isn't anyway.
That's not what we're designing now.
Yeah.
Holy, uh, so first of all, I can say and believe what I'm saying. And we did give, give things away. We gave away all that infrastructure up there on the top of the hill. We've never done it for anybody else, ever. All of Shelton is being hooked up. All of Shelton is being hooked up and they're paying for them. I do believe in growth. I don't believe in paying for somebody else's growth. I don't believe in, I want an, an office, uh, more offices, so I'm gonna build it on the, on the owner's property and let him go ahead and keep it rented out. That's what we're talking about here. We've never done it before. So we did give that away. And we still are giving it away if we let them hook up to it and we just don't even charge them even part of that five million. The problem is, is you're saying that we have that, that, I'm saying that. Nobody has ever said that we're going to charge them. I keep asking about that. Nobody said, no, I'm talking about a dollar amount for buying into the system. If somebody said it, please tell me that dollar amount, cause I've been waiting to hear it. But we also don't have the scope to decide what that dollar amount is. I wanna know what that dollar amount looks like. But nobody said it. And I keep asking that. And I've been asking that since this began. What does that look like? But so far, that's never been, uh, an, a question that was answered. So if I'm wrong commissioner, then tell me. We said we're gonna get, charge them this, you know, thirty million dollars, fifty million dollars to, to, to buy a percentage of this, this thing.
Well, and this is what the grant is for.
No, the grant is for them.
It's for designing.
For them.
No.
Yes, and he made it clear. He said it at that meeting you were at also. It is for them, not for us. We can't- Originally, when we were looking at it, we were talking about, and I agree, we were talking as though we were gonna use some of this grant to look at some of our infrastructure problems. That was one of the things I was looking at too, thinking, "Okay, that makes sense." He's made it very clear both times that he's been in front of us. That's not what this is. They'll hold it back and they're gonna make sure that it's for them and it benefits them. Then, then let them just spend their money themselves to do it. It doesn't have to go through us in order to do it. So that's not what the grant is. And I, I, I said this before and I hope you will remember that we got into the Growth Management Act because we signed off because we wanted some money. We got forty-five thousand dollars and we jumped in. We shouldn't have done it.
In two thousand and three.
But to go after, uh, this, just to get that money, it's not the right reason either. Let them put together a feasibility. Let them show what they should be giving us in order to buy in because they're gonna save a lot of money. Even if they, they, even if they offered us twenty million or thirty million. Okay, well, at least that's a legitimate thing saying, "Okay, you bought into the plant. It cost us this much to do it." Whenever you're figuring value, especially property, you have, uh, how much it costs to buy a light property? You also have how much it costs to build, to rebuild, to replace. We can figure out some type of amount there, but we need to do a feasibility to do it. But no, we've never had a dollar amount offered and worked. Anything I've ever heard has been saying, and Pat, you weren't here, so I'm definitely not putting words into your mouth. And I apologize if it comes off it that way. We've never said that we're gonna want to charge this amount or anything like this amount in order for them to hook up.
I, I don't believe we can make that statement until we get the commitment that we're going to, we intend to move forward with this project. I don't think that can happen unless we sign this ILA. So, you, you can, you can say, "We shouldn't sign the ILA," which means we should never do this project. Which means you're asking Mason County residents to pay the burdens of all of the expansion costs of this sewer system, which we will have to do at some point in the future. I don't know exactly when, but, you know, this, this is coming. So, if we're going to have to do that, then let's figure out how do we get somebody else to pay the majority of those costs?
Don't disagree with you.
Well, I don't see any other way to get to that point without signing this agreement that we intend to give them service. We, we... In this ILA, as I read it, we do not have, we're not locked into this if we, if they come up with, we can't negotiate an offer which works for us, which I'm not exactly sure what all that looks like because, again, I'm new to all this, but... This has been sitting around for, I don't know, two years? Longer?
Four.
Four. So it's-
No, the discussions, this hasn't been sitting around. We never had that ILA.
No, no, I mean, the, the concept of moving this project forward's been around forever. So there's nothing quick about this. And I have not moved without, uh, I've not said a whole lot about this because I keep studying and I keep reading and I keep talking to people and I keep trying to get to the bottom of a lot of different facts. And it seems pretty clear that, um, especially after last Thursday, seeing, going to the presentation from the, the naval base commander, that, uh, we, we can't fathom what fifteen billion dollars drops on top of Bremerton's gonna do. And that's just the Navy's estimated costs of what they're gonna be putting in. That means at least double, maybe triple that in other ancillary money coming in for support for, for other businesses, for restaurants. I mean, Belfer is going to benefit like, uh, we can't imagine with that kind of number of businesses, number of jobs, all those things are gonna be showing up right on the border at that P SIC area. Where are they gonna go for lunch? A lot of them are heading down the street to Belfer. Because those are where the restaurants are right now. Now, other restaurants will be built as the area grows. But there's gonna be just a, a massive amount of, of people moving into the area. Jobs, the number of jobs they talked about was astronomical. So, what do we do with that? Do we sit back and do nothing and say, "Hey, you have to give us money before we even consider moving forward with this?" I don't think that, I don't think that works. I don't think that'll ever get us there. And that's, that's just the way I see this whole thing playing out.
Well, actually, I don't disagree with what you just said. I don't, not at all. The problem is this ILA hasn't been structured in that way. Do you remember when you did the work and, and you did a lot of the work that structured? But that was rejected and put back. The structure that you put in was good structure. It was a protective, there was stuff in there that was a protective mechanism for our county. Those are the things that have to be in there because eventually we can't sign an agreement saying we're going to do it without knowing what's in it. We know, we have to know what we're going to do first before we actually commit fully. What I mean by that is, how will it pencil out? How will you pay, uh, for the expansion? How will you do? All the things that you had talked about before is the same stuff that I need. That's what I'm talking about. So what does that look like? Well, if we have an agreement that if, how was it, how was it put? If this, this, and this occurs, we will do this. If this, this, and this occurs, we will do this. That's how it was structured. That was one of the things that you were working on and putting there. That was good, solid stuff and that was a protective thing for our county. Those are the types of things that we have to see. It isn't just the dollar, how much is it? We don't know because we haven't had the feasibility. Well, during the process, we find out that it's gonna cost them twenty million. But we gotta remember, I don't want it to cost them twenty million for what they want. They still kinda help us. What does that cost for us? As we're going through the process, I can't, I'm not gonna disagree with that. If I can tell you right now, if we were making, I don't like it. I'm not gonna hide that or, or pretend. But I've been doing this a long time and I do try to always find a way to get to, to yes when we can. If we had the right amount that was being offered and some protections for our community, I'm not gonna stand in its way. You see me up here disagree over and over again, but yet at the time, if we can come to even close, then I'll back off. That's what I'm looking to do here. If we can find a way to protect the community while we're doing it and protect us while we're establishing how much it costs as we're moving forward, then I'm not gonna stand in the way of it.
So you, you just said that, uh, the ILA was rejected. I'm not aware of that.
I don't, I don't-
We, we're the ones who haven't signed the ILA.
No, 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 not, not, we sent back some stuff for the ILA.
And they, and they responded.
Yeah, after they, they, after they sent us theirs, we thought, "No," so we put in some of our own stuff. And they were saying that a lot of that was a non-starter. But we're saying, I was saying at the time, "But how do I sign this? If we have to accept it first and then figure out what's in it." We do better than that here. We need to figure out what's in it first before it's completely committed. I, I have no problem with us doing, intention to, to do it, to move forward. If they can meet our requirements and then I would hope that we would all discuss the requirements and make sure that they benefit this county each and every one we put in. That doesn't bother me. I'm not gonna, I'm not standing against that.
So you have to put your, you have to have the ability in a negotiation to look at it from the other side. Why would Bremerton, if they don't, if they don't trust that we're going to move forward and give them, uh, wrong word, we're gonna provide them with sewer capacity? You know, they can't, they can't say, "Yeah, we're going to do this" when they don't know that we're even gonna, we agree to move forward. I mean, I, I, I wouldn't.
But as a business, then how can, how can we put it forward without knowing what we're gonna get and how we're gonna do it?
But that's not what the ILA is for.
Yes, it is. We have to-
Not, not the one I've read.
We have to make sure-
Unless we created a new one that I'm not aware of.
We have to, their, their ILA they put to us, if we put one together that says that we are not committed, if this, this, and this don't happen, that, again- that again, I'm not, I'm not against that. That is how we protect ourselves. But that's not what they wanna put forward. And they made it clear, they want a commitment first before they'll just establish how much or, or what the cost would be. We can't do it that way. We have to go the other direction. We have to establish everything we're going to get to see if we're gonna sell it, because once we commit a hundred and sixty thousand gallons, it gets committed. And we have to make sure that whatever we're committing, that we're getting paid on top of what we already would expect to use within our system.
But you're talking in circles. It's the same. It, it's the same, we can't move forward, you know, you can't do this until you do this, but you can't do this until you do this. Or you can't do this until you've done that. You can't, you'll never, ever get there. That's why this is a four-year project. If we don't move forward, I mean, we either kill it or we move forward. It's, it's time to either, to use the sewer metaphor, crap or get off the pot. That's what needs to happen. So, uh, we go either way. Now, I think we should get somebody else to pay for all of these upgrades that we're going to need to do, or at least a significant portion of them. You, you keep going back to, well, we need to recoup what, what has, uh, the citizens have paid into this. Or get a big chunk of it back or all that sort of stuff. Uh, it's not their responsibility for the decisions that were made in two thousand nine, which stuck this county with something that was way overbuilt and it, it has cost this county a ton of money. That's not Bremerton's responsibility. But we need to make sure that we protect the taxpayers going forward. And that's what, that's what I'm all about. Cause I'm not, I don't really care about how we got to this point. I care about where we are right now and what we're going to be doing tomorrow and five years from now and ten years from now. And these guys are gonna be coming to us saying, hey, we gotta, we gotta add a new ladder.
Well, that's why, that's why we have this, the, the charges, that's what it's supposed to be for, according to our, our own code. But it, I do not hold them responsible for the past. What I am holding anybody responsible for is if I have something of value and the people own it, this is our people's product. They want it, they have to pay to have a part of it. Whatever their share is, is the value of it. Because even in our own laws and stuff, we're supposed to establish what value is. We haven't done that yet, but we're supposed to. I just want them to pay their value. I don't want them to pay.
Have established the value.
Yeah, there's, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing any of that. But I don't think we ever get there if we don't sign the ILA now. That, I mean, now, meaning very soon.
So again, what is, then I guess we need to say, what does the ILA say that we're signing? Because if it, if it leaves the ability for us to make sure that we get all these things, then that's, then that's not where I'm, I'm stopped or bothered by it. I'm bothered by it committing to it, no matter what, before we know what they're even gonna give us. Before we know how much they're going to contribute to our growth. Before we know how much money will come from them or what's the expected part to come from them.
What's your definition of our growth? Is it, are you talking just the sewer?
The sewer, our sewer system, but, uh, not.
Because I can't, I can't imagine that they would be adding or questioning us about our, um, our development, our, that type of growth, our economic growth. I wouldn't question their economic growth either. I don't question theirs.
No, our growth, what we, what Pat was talking about is we need to pay for the growth of our system.
Our service.
Yeah, what are they gonna pay for that? How much does it look like? How much does their cost, first of all? Now, if they, if it's a wash, for example, if they just give us what it costs to service them, that's not a benefit to us. It's not. That's just a, a wash. That's us just giving our system without charging them for the car. Our people paid for a car. They wanna use the car, they need to pay something for the car or, or for its value.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's arguing that.
So, so we need to figure out what that is and make sure that's in there. And if we put an ILA together that says if we can agree on this, this, and this, which is what you had done that first time, again, that doesn't bother me. I, I guess.
So I, I don't, I don't know that we've seen any rejection of the ILA. What we saw rejection of was, we had a meeting in here with, with Ned Lieber and Mayor Wheeler. And there were suggestions and comments made, and they said, no, or we'll talk about that or whatever. That was, that was it. That had nothing to do with the ILA. I mean, it really didn't. To me, you keep putting the cart in front of the horse in this whole discussion. But we can't move forward, again, it's a circular argument. We can't move forward until we do this. But we can't do this until we do this, and we can't do this unless we've already done this. So it's like, you never get there. It's the Gordian knot.
But, but in no business would we, would you or anything else in your business ever say, I will sign that, saying that we're going to do this without setting out the parameters of the cost, the payment? You know, we have to do that before we can do it. Or we put it in a way that it's not committal until we have that. The, the work you guys did on the other one, and actually, I remember some of the stuff you put in there, I also agreed with it. That's why I actually, when along with, I didn't stand against that, that sending that letter, if you remember. I did not sit there and vote against it, because there was a lot of work that went in. Would I rather have not been there? Yes. But there was good work that went in, and the letter that was sent was a pretty reasonable letter. The, for our ILA, our idea of, of how to implement the ILA. If we go back to that and send that to them and have them line out even what they're saying no to, at least we can establish, uh, what we're actually doing.
We don't think we can ever get to the point that you're talking about unless we sign the ILA. You, again, my perception is that you keep putting the cart in front of the horse. Right? That's the way. Because I do sign agreements with customers all the time in my business. Usually, it's a non-disclosure agreement. You're never gonna give it, I'm not gonna disclose any information about what they're gonna tell me. Well, I have to sign that before they'll tell me what I can't disclose. Uh, it's, it's the same kind of concept where it's like, well, I have to agree that I'm not gonna disclose anything. If they tell me something that, it happened with me with Motorola years ago. They want me to sign a, a non-disclosure agreement because they wanted to patent a product that I was selling to them. But I didn't know what I was signing a non-disclosure agreement for. When they, when they brought this to me and said, oh, this is what we wanna do, I said, that's my product that I've been selling to you. They said, oh, we didn't think you'd notice. So it blew up the whole deal. So it happens all the time in, in that kind of context where a customer tells you, hey, I need you to sign this non-disclosure agreement. Wait, I've already just, that's my design. I, it's my patented product that I sold to you, and now you wanna re-patent it? No. It's not gonna happen. I don't care how many attorneys you have. I have the proof that this was my product. So I liken it to that. The ILA says, we agree that we would like to do business with you. Now, with that comes three million dollars to Bremerton from Commerce, and they've agreed to split that up with us. Their words, one point six million for them, one point four million for us. That money allows us to do the studies that you're talking about, feasibility studies, the design, uh, process. Cause you can't, you can't really know exactly what it's gonna cost until you do these designs. Sure, you can guess. That's what Loretta, I'm sure Richard have done. You can guess. Maybe you had a hand in it, but we can guess. We don't know.
So what if we don't like the outcome?
Then if we can't get, yeah, we don't do it. We can't, you can't be forced to do something just because you said it's our intention to, to move forward with this.
If it says it's our intention, but that's not what, maybe you'll, you'll change it, but that's not what I've seen so far. I wanna make clear. So there's a difference between committing and committing to, to go forward to see if it fits, if we can make it work. There's two different things. Are you saying that you're, you're willing to commit before we establish the cost of everything they're going to do?
I'm willing to commit to move forward with the project, yes, absolutely. So I think we need to do that because, the thing I've stated repeatedly, let's get somebody else to pay for the expansion that we're gonna have to do.
Okay, and you're willing to commit before we know how they'll pay for it or in what way they'll pay for it?
It depends on what you mean. We were agreeing that we're going to move forward with the process, but then begins the negotiation. Once we can, once we've done the design work, now we can say, hey, we're gonna have to spend X number of millions of dollars. Bremerton, before we're gonna continue, before we're gonna start, you know, putting, uh, shovel in the ground and do any of this, you have to agree to pay that money. Plus, you're gonna pay this, this price, and they're gonna come back and say, nope, that's too much. We're only gonna pay this much. And we go back and forth. It's a negotiation. That's what happens.
But you're talking about in order to, to benefit them. I'm talking about, so far, we're not talking about in order to benefit us.
No, no, absolutely. That's part of the negotiation. I mean, I'm not gonna.
But once we commit.
We don't negotiate to, to lose money on something.
You commit after you negotiate. You don't, you don't, you don't, you don't, uh, commit and then negotiate. It's the other way around, and that's what I'm trying to get at. So are we willing to not even know our risk and do our risk assessment and commit before we do that? Cause that's what it comes down to. Are we gonna commit before we figure out how much we can get from this or how much it'll cost us? Are we gonna commit before we know, uh, the benefit or the risk? Are we gonna commit before we know what they're willing to even pay us? Cause that's what we're, we're saying here. I don't wanna commit without those things that we shouldn't. We won't even commit to buy a park without a feasibility to establish that. Why would we do something like this without a full feasibility, but, or end up full scope of work? But even if we don't, I don't wanna commit without knowing the risk. I don't mind committing after we know the risk. I don't wanna commit before knowing how they'll pay and what they'll pay and what their, their share is, how much they're gonna give us in the deal or something.
We're in an impasse, because you keep saying the same thing.
No, we're not in an impasse. You guys are moving forward.
You keep saying the same thing, that we can't move forward until we do this, but we can't do this until we do this. And we can't do this until that's done. It doesn't ever, it never gets there. It's a, it's a circular argument.
And we do have estimates. I believe, Loretta, you sent a, an email on the nineteenth, August nineteenth, answering some of your questions.
That's an estimate for, for the cost to do this.
The two point two four million.
Expansion stuff. Not all the other stuff that we, that we need.
It's improvements, Andy. That's what I'm talking about. You keep changing.
Okay, you guys go ahead and, listen, you go ahead and move forward with it, all right? Because I'm telling you right now, you're wrong, you did it already once to us. You're wrong to do it again. I'm telling you now, you're wrong to, to enter into a deal without knowing how much it's gonna cost us or how much they're gonna pay us. You're wrong to enter into a deal without knowing our risk and knowing how to overcome that risk. Where we need to know all these things first before you enter a deal, and the ILA is the deal. Unless we change the ILA structure like you did in the first one, that gives us the ability to get out of it. And why would we even enter into something when we don't get out of it? And the, the law says we're supposed to know the value, and they, any expansion that we go into, any other, uh, jurisdiction is supposed to pay their, their, their share of the value of the product they get.
Can we bring up a copy of the ILA?
Sure. Can you find it for us?
I'm looking and I cannot find it. I wanted to bring it up so that we could take a look at it, because.
Which ILA?
I think the one that we did.
The last payoff.
Well, they, I, I don't have an issue with that. I keep trying to explain that to you.
That's, that's the only thing we're talking about.
That's what we're trying to move forward.
No, we sent that to them. And I actually stood up there and I voted with you guys to send that over. I didn't like it, but it was still better than all the other stuff. I already voted to send that over to them.
And, and that's what we're talking about signing, is that, that's the ILA.
Okay, well, then send it, we already, we already voted to send it over to them. Send it over to them.
Then why are we arguing?
We, we did send it over to them.
And?
Well, we haven't sent it over as a signed copy. They're waiting for.
No, we didn't send over a signed copy.
No, we never sent over a signed copy. We sent over to them.
It was the basis of the next meeting, basically. It was the talking point or the discussion point for, for the first meeting that you had with, with Mayor Wheeler and, um.
And that, and this ILA will just continue the discussion.
Yeah. I guess in my mind, I'm thinking that's the next step is refining.
That's what I'm thinking too.
And that's what I, that's, like I said, I didn't vote against it. I voted with you guys up there. That ILA did.
That's, that's what we're, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, if all we're, well, we didn't have a lot of other stuff, but what they talked about and what they said, okay, so let's forget what they said. That's our ILA that we sent forward. Okay? Cause I, like I said, I voted with you on that one. I did not fight it, because there was a lot of work that went in. And I was actually pretty proud of everybody, because I felt like when it was done, Mason County had a lot of protections in there. Is it what I want? No, but there's three of us. Is it a lot better than what we originally had from Bremerton? Hell, yeah. There was a lot of good stuff and good work that went in there, enough to where you got me to say, okay. If that's what we're doing, and that's what we're saying should be our next step, I, let's do that. It's better than, than any of this other stuff, because their ILA puts us in risk. Ours gave us the ability, if it goes bad, to allow.
Exactly.
That's.
And no, nobody wants.
That's what we're talking about.
None of us want anything bad in this company.
Okay, well, like I said, we already passed that. So I, I, we agreed, we passed it and agreed to send it. So let, let's send it, and either they will agree to it or they will do changes.
I don't believe we voted on it.
We had to.
We had the draft.
I think we had to.
We had the draft and we sent a letter, right? We did not send the ILA. That's what I remember.
You want one?
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris. And you're good.
Too much paper.
Right?
Couldn't wear paper.
Yeah, I don't believe that we ever signed it. We signed the letter, but we did not agree to send the ILA. That's my, that's my, that's me trying to pull at my own, my own things.
Yeah, radio frequency.
See, these were the parts, these were the parts that we added. Again, that's why I went along with it. Uh, both parties agree, uh, in order for it to happen, both parties have to agree which areas be served. Mason County Suburban grant, both parties meet and regular review, uh, grant products. Both parties review and concur on engineering reports, fishing, blah, blah, but there was more too, uh. Cause we, we had a thing in there that was a big one that said if we agree with the final aspect, that's what we move forward.
In my recollection of this was that Bremerton was concerned about this being a catch twenty-two. That if we, number one, and this is what, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I recall that Bremerton was concerned that if we do this first part about the feasibility, right? As part of the grant, that that could stop everything, and then they'd have to repay whatever grant expenditures. So basically, Ned and Mayor Wheeler were promoting that we do that work right now. That we don't do it as part of the grant agreement, but we work through those details right now. And then once we're mutually satisfied that we've answered the questions, then we make this decision here, this four or five.
That's what I've been saying, cause that's what I heard too. And that's what I've been saying. They've been, they're saying they want all the stuff first, and I want the stuff first, or we do this. I have not, no issue with this. Well, I wanna say it correctly. I do have issue, but I negotiated with everybody else and we came to a place that I could stand with this. And I did. And I still do. That is not an issue for me. The other stuff is what they wanted, which was for us to commit first, which was for us to make these determinations. And if there is gonna be a feasibility, they should pay for it. Not us. But that's a whole nother thing. But again, I, I, I already stood with this and I haven't changed my mind. I will stand with this. If we wanna take this and put this on the agenda, if we didn't, sorry, I thought we did, but if we did not, then, then let's put it on the agenda and send it over.
They've seen this.
I know.
And that's, I mean, that's been part of what I, to me, to my mind, we've already gotten to this point. The, the issue, both parties seem to be agreeing, let's get some meat and potatoes, let's get some numbers on ballparking. What's this look like? And then so you can make a decision one way or the other. Is this a benefit to Mason County?
How, how, do you have a timeline that that may be?
Well, I think that would be a question of, I, I, number one, how long is Commerce gonna hang on to this money? how long is Commerce gonna hang on to this money, right?
We have one session and it'll go away.
Yeah. So to me, that is the most critical deadline. And then whatever your level of patience is on when you wanna see this.
Well, it has to take whatever it takes to get them. But again, if this is the next step, then let's do it. Like I said, I already had agreed to that and I'm not gonna back out of what I, what I, I said. I'm still there. I will, you know, let's put this forward. If they sign it, they sign it. If they don't, they don't. Uh, if they wanna to make a change to it, then we're gonna find out. And the question is, can we stomach that change? Because as long as it does what this did of what you worked hard on. Cause like I said, I remember even complimenting you saying, okay, would you just add it to this? No, it was the other way around. I read it and I go, hold on, I wanna hold off. Let's read this some more because there was some changes in there that may take me out of, out of the battle on it. And that was the changes you made on that last meeting. So I read through them and came back and said, it's not what I want, but it's pretty damn good. And Pat went through and did the same thing to, to make sure that, you know, we had our hats, we had our stuff. I'm there. If this is what we're, we're doing and what we're talking.
I do think that just in thinking back about the last conversations we've had and what we've heard from Bremerton, many of the items that commissioners, we all want to see addressed, Bremerton has no disagreement with.
I mean, well then, let's, let's do it.
And so there's gonna be some outstanding things that maybe are the plus items. Then those are what, you know, those are the things that we need to lean into and have further conversations and say, yeah, plus or.
Again, if they wanna say, well, we'll give you ten dollars per ERU and, you know, and nothing else. It's like, no, we want, we're not doing this. It has to be a good deal.
Yeah, what this does is it moves us out of this and gets us into a conversation or the next steps.
What this does, that is that.
Right.
This is what they were saying was not gonna, I'm willing to move forward, but we already agreed. And I'll still stand behind it and I'll take it, you know?
Well, that only took fifty-two minutes.
Well, yeah, no, we already, we already did this, but if it doesn't, if it hasn't come before the board, cause I don't remember whether or not we voted to send it.
We did not vote to send this. We voted on the letter. We agreed on the letter to send, but we did not. From, from what I can remember, somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, we, this was not put on an action agenda for signature. Cause I, and I believe Tim reviewed this as well.
He did.
So it was, it was ready to go, so.
Yep.
Not our.
Yeah.
Let's hopefully this is move forward.
Right.
Then let's, let's put this forward.
I like that.
Okay, sounds like Monday.
Um, next Monday. Monday after this coming Monday.
That's right.
Does it actually need to be briefed for this move straight to, you've already discussed this and have agreed.
We have discussed this.
So it goes on Tuesdays?
We can move it to next Tuesdays. We can move it to next Tuesdays.
I'll agree.
Good.
So do we go and have shots now? What are we gonna have? How do we celebrate this? Cause wow.
I, I gotta drive to one at you.
I'm gonna go get chemicals, but it's the wrong kind.
I was gonna say, what kind of shots?
No, I get tequila. I get, I get it in a quart.
I, um.
I've never, I've never thrown a little booze in it, not since I had shots.
Give it a shot.
Many commissioners, I, I appreciate your question about timeline because I wanna make sure that whatever, um, whichever direction we're going, that we have clear direction and expectation from commissioners about timeline and schedule so that we are accommodating and then prioritizing accordingly. So, um.
We get this on the agenda for Tuesday after this coming?
Yep.
And then get it sent to them and then we look for their response.
Well, the interesting thing is, it won't matter. If we get, if we pass this and they agree to it, then they could use the money to start to find the stuff out. Because the way this is set up, it leaves us the ability to see what it is first before agreeing to it.
So commissioners, I, I'm sorry to put a pause. I'm, I'm this, I'm, I'm sorry. But we've already talked about this either or business in this letter. And, and Bremerton has already said, look, we, I think we both have already said, right? That we're gonna do feasibility ahead.
No, if, if they're gonna pay for it, if they're gonna use the money to pay for it, I don't wanna pay for the feasibility.
But we've never, and we've never had anybody sign it.
And get no formal response back.
I think, I think our next steps would be to make this formal and then.
Perfect.
Yeah, we knocked this one out. This is one we, we knocked out. And this is one the commission put forward and I still put it forward. I'm good.
Okay. All right.
You're good.
Got a great discussion. All right.
So procedurally, are you guys gonna put together a briefing document for the meeting?
We will take the lead.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Is that what I'm hearing, Travis?
Saying it's a perfect answer? I appreciate that.
All right.
And again, I know this isn't perfect and it's not what I would want, but you guys did a lot of work and I appreciated the work that went into this. And I still support this.
Well, in this three people, not all of us are gonna agree a hundred percent on everything all the time, nor should we ever, because then I would question our abilities, I think, independently. And so we've, we've come this far. Let's, let's shoot it forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, cause we, we are finished with this discussion.
Yeah, no.
Oh, we need copies? And.
The one thing to know, I do believe that this time it is going to go. But I've been around for so long that I remember this before. That's how the Bremerton.
So we didn't have to wait, we have to formally close the meeting? So if we, do we have a merger?
Yes.
We'll re-adjourn.
I'll say.
We're adjourned. Thank you guys though.
I spoke with the captain.